First collaborated local event where TAFE and Hawkesbury Council have listened to feedback. Understand that some of your pain points are around emerging businesses. So as your local Richmond manager of TAFE services, I would like to welcome everybody who's taken some time out of their day to attend this meeting. And our very first webinar meeting, as rightly pointed out by Lisa, so there's a lot more to come. So without further ado, I would like to introduce you all to James Nettleton, who is your local TAFE New South Wales account manager. And there to guide you all and provide you with some insights. Thank you. And over to you, James.
Thanks, Mina. And thanks, Lisa, and to the council for organising this event. Yeah, we'll hopefully see more of these as we come back to the new normal in the next year or so. As Mina said, I am an account manager at TAFE, so I look after the relationships that TAFE has with businesses. And that can be small, medium or large in Western Sydney, and more specifically North Western Sydney. So I do look after a lot of businesses in and around the area of the Hawkesbury LGA. And I guess part of my role is really to create relationships with our clients and businesses. So they can understand a little bit more what TAFE has to offer. And it's interesting, in the short, or couple of years I've been at TAFE, there is so much that TAFE has to offer businesses, but quite often businesses are not aware of what TAFE has to offer them. So I think there's certainly opportunity to start scratching at the surface and seeing what is underneath. And within what we can all do from the variety of TAFE campuses in Western Sydney. And I guess part of my role is consultation with business. It's listening. I want to understand and listen to what's going on in your businesses, in the different areas that you operate in and that you have staff and or other relationships, partnerships. And with Mina's organisation, Mina's part of TAFE, in the relationship side, there's a lot that we can offer to the variety of different organisations in Western Sydney. I guess part of my role is also liaising with the multiple different skill teams. There's nine of those in Western Sydney. We're going to hear from Andrew shortly, representing one of those. However, we also have a large area in apprenticeships and we look forward to hearing from Ross in that context as well. But we do work with a lot of businesses in multiple different industries. Just about any industry you can think of in Australia or in New South Wales, we do work with. Be it for apprenticeships or traineeships, as the case may be. Or for shorter training that may not be a nationally registered, sorry, may not be a nationally qualified qualification. It may be either a skill set or just training that is required to do a particular job. We have teachers and designers that can tailor and customise just about any training that an organisation wants to do. So there's benefits in that such that it may be a small amount of training to commence with, but it could form part of a nationally recognised qualification or a unit of competency that someone can then move on to be trained and qualified in. So there's a number of benefits of discussing what might be required by an organisation. And I guess I like to think that I'm often the primary point of contact because TAFE can be a difficult, sometimes difficult organisation to find the right personal area to navigate with. I can be a little bit like a one stop shop and direct that traffic to the right place. Get the subject matter experts in front of the client in the business so that they can talk about the detail as required. You know, I do have general knowledge, as we'll hear from Ross and maybe a bit from Andrew as well, general knowledge of the apprenticeships that we offer across New South Wales and the traineeships. But also the side behind that in terms of whether it's covered under particular funding arrangements from state or federal organisations. So yeah, you know, we do have quite good knowledge in that sort of context to assist organisations in navigating what can be somewhat difficult areas sometimes. I guess what I'm alluding to also is there are many flexible options or opportunities that a business can have in dealing with TAFE. Be it short courses or skill sets or full qualifications, as is required and as the case may be. We have many different modes of providing that, and I'm sure that'll be alluded to as well in a minute. That can be face to face, which we all know and love that style of training. Obviously, the last 12 months has certainly made us look at other alternatives to face to face, which we have done and do, being online and or connected learning. So a lot of the training that we do can now be done via those sorts of mechanisms or blended. Or depending on what's required by the client, we can, you know, we can have it at our campus, have it on the client's business site, just depends on what the situation is and what's required. Again, somewhat flexible in how we may look at delivery. I guess the other thing I'll just quickly mention is in terms of some of the clients TAFE's worked with, it's many and varied. As I said earlier, from small, medium and large, we do work with a number of councils. A lot of the councils in Western Sydney, we work closely with. We work with manufacturing organisations in Western Sydney as well. Also organisations that may be national and certainly in areas such as automotive, manufacturing and across all sorts of areas. We also work in areas that might be smaller organisations, such as childcare, aged care. Or even in areas of assisting clients with other facets of their business that might be in terms of information technology. It might be in terms of advancing skills in business administration or leadership and management, which can be almost associated with any type of organisation, really. So yeah, that's it from me, Mina, and maybe Andrew can come on. And then afterwards, if there are questions, yeah, we can take those.
Thank you. Thank you so much, James, for that very informative insight. And how we can collaborate with industry and local businesses. I would like now to introduce you to Andrew McKilloch, who is our head teacher in information technology, who will provide you with, who is our subject matter expert in all things IT based. And he'll take you through how we can collaborate with your organisation. Thank you and welcome, Andrew.
Thanks, Mina. Good evening, everyone. What I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen because there's a bit of information that I want to get through. And I've put it in a PowerPoint presentation, just to make it a little bit easier to digest. Okay. Can everyone see my screen? Yep, okay. And that's decided to put it somewhere else. Bear with me, I'm just going to swap. Okay, can we see that now?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, awesome. So what I'm going to do is give you a bit of an overview of what we offer from within our section. I'm going to start very broadly, talking about the different areas. Some of it may be specific or applicable to a business. Some of it may be just good to know because you might have a friend or a loved one who may be interested in doing something like this. But either way, it'll be awareness that will help you, whether it's from a business or a community standpoint. So and then feel free to put any questions in the chat as we go along. So here at Richmond, we offer a range of qualifications for both IT and business. So we don't just do IT, but we also do business administration. And we offer it in different ways. And so we have, for example, we've got our four qualifications, which is ideal for school leavers and people who want to return to work and potentially upgrade their skills. Like I said, this is in IT and this is in business services. Some of these quals we are running, or actually I should say, one of these quals we plan to start running in term two in the evening. And we're designing it in a way, which I'll talk a little bit more later in the presentation, but it's geared towards small business owners and managers. We also offer traineeships, both in IT and business services. And there is quite a bit that we do in terms of customised training, which we will touch on towards the end. So what do we offer? We have two courses that we offer in basic computing. One is a certificate one in information, digital media and technology. And the other one is a certificate one in business. They're very similar courses. And what they're about is basic digital literacy course, digital literacy. And so it's, these two are courses that will help you in how to use a computer. In 2021, these are very basic skills. It's pretty much a given with many jobs. But there are a lot of people who have managed to not upskill and are able to do their jobs to a certain extent without it. But a lot of businesses are finding that's getting increasingly more difficult. So this is something we offer one day a week and it goes for one semester, which is, we say six months, but realistically, when you take out holidays, it's about four months. What they'll learn in these two courses is how to use Word and Excel and PowerPoint. They'll learn how to use a smart personal device. And in the IT course, they'll also learn how to surf the internet safely, how to research effectively and how to email, send emails. Whereas in the cert one in business, it'll focus a little bit more around keyboarding and WHS. In terms of IT, we have two qualifications that we offer. Certificate three in information, digital media and technology, and certificate four in information technology. Both of these courses are available on campus, face to face delivery. And it's also available via traineeship. So if you have a trainee or a potential trainee, both of these courses are available. The certificate three, they'll learn how to build a computer, upgrade and repair them. They'll also set up a basic network, which includes a wifi connection and how to administer that network. And there are also some skills that we try to impart around how to interact with clients and how to support their customers or users. At the certificate four level, we build upon all of those skills. And they learn more about administering a network, administering the computers on the network, supporting the users with issues they may be having. And also getting a bit more into networking and managing those networks. Both of these courses run one semester each, full time. We do offer this part time as well. So if someone has a need to just attend one or two days a week, we can customise the training around that. And if they're doing a traineeship, we can do a lot of the, incorporate a lot of the learning around the workplace. And they probably only have to come in one day a week. In terms of business services, we actually offer three qualifications. One at the certificate three and two at the certificate four level. At certificate three, we have business administration. This is where they'll learn how to deliver customer service and organise schedules. They'll also learn how to produce business documents and spreadsheets. They'll basically learn how to use Word, Excel, Outlook, Publisher and PowerPoint. At the certificate four level, they'll build upon these skills and they'll learn much more advanced Word and Excel skills. They'll also learn how to organise meetings, travel and coordinate resources, as well as how to address customer needs and how to present to clients. Both of those two courses are available as part of a traineeship as well. And the third course that we're offering, and this one's a brand new course, and this one is targeting small businesses. And it's a certificate four in business. This will run in the evenings. We're planning to run this two days a week over a year. And during this time, you will learn how to promote and market your business. You'll learn how to manage customer relationships. And you'll take a deeper dive into Microsoft Word and Excel. And finally, you'll also learn how to manage business finances. So this is talking about budgeting and reporting. In the evening, we do offer a range of courses. So we have the certificate four in business that I just mentioned. And also that certificate four is available as part of a traineeship. But we also run other short courses. And these short courses are primarily geared at small businesses, whether you work in a small business or you own and manage a small business. We have social media marketing basics. So this is where, it's a six week course, one night a week, where you'll learn the basics of social media marketing. So what we do is we go through Facebook and Instagram, learn how to set it up, how to read the analytics, what sort of content to put up there. But it is a basic course. Once students finish that, we do have the next level up, which is digital marketing with impact. And this is taking a very holistic view at digital marketing. So with digital marketing today, that includes social media marketing, email marketing and search engine marketing. We also have WordPress fundamentals. So this is another course that we are offering. This one is basically for those who want to know how to build and manage their own small business website using WordPress. And then we also have Microsoft Word and Excel course, a course of Microsoft Word and Excel. And finally, we're looking at introducing cyber security awareness. So this is where you'll learn the fundamentals of how to be very careful on the internet, what to look out for, making sure that you don't end up being tricked into giving any information that you shouldn't be giving or having your computer hacked. Our traineeships cover all the courses that I've mentioned, all the full qualifications. So it's three and cert four in either business, business administration and information technology. And we can customise this basically to the needs of your business, where we can do some onsite and incorporate some onsite learning and onsite delivery. And then up to one day a week at TAFE within the classroom. With our assessments, we will try to incorporate your workplace. So that way your students, your employees or your trainees aren't working on a fictitious case study where it's appropriate. We can bring in a real client if that suits. And we're also able to do a range of customised training. So we're not limited to what I've just discussed. There are other areas that you may want to get training for your staff. It's all going to come down to what you would like delivered, how you would like it delivered, and the sort of funding we can tap into or the sort of budget we will need. There are basically two ways we can do this. One is to map it to a unit of competency. So basically, there'll be a unit that we deliver and assess to. And the student will end up with a recognised unit of competency on a statement of attainment. And this can contribute to further training down the track. So it may be a unit that's part of a certificate three or a certificate four or even a diploma. And if they want to continue learning and continue upskilling, that's already one or two units ticked off. The other option is to do a non nationally recognised workshop. There's no assessments, it's purely delivery. And we can completely customise the training to your business. Both of them we can, but with the unit of competency, there'll be some requirements that we must include. An example of how we can do something like this, I was talking to a particular association today. It's really big in the Hawkesbury, but I won't mention it because it's all in the, it's all in the works at the moment. But basically, we're going to do digital marketing for their social media marketing, I should say. We're going to deliver social media marketing to their members. And we're not looking at mapping to a unit of competency. It will be purely just delivery. But we're going to train their members in using the digital assets that this association provides. So they have a whole range of sample posts. They have photos and videos that they can leverage, their customers, their members can leverage. And so we'll be teaching them how to use Facebook, how to market using Facebook and Instagram, and how to create their own content, but also to take advantage of this association's content as well. And also, we will be going through the policies and the guidelines that they have to work within according to that association. So we can really customise that training to the need of your business. Okay, I've put my contact information there. So if you want to find out more about it, you're welcome to email me or give me a call. But if you have any questions right now, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Andrew. What we might do is we might just leave questions for later on. And equally, what I'll do, as this has been recorded, we will be sharing the level of contacts to everybody more broadly because it will be available on the Hawkesbury website. So thank you so much, Andrew, for that very informative presentation. Last but not least, I'd like to introduce you to Ross Natoli. And Ross is another subject matter expert in the field of apprenticeships and traineeships. So Ross, I'll hand it over to you and thank you.
Great, thank you, Mina. So I've just got a presentation there, I think. Is that up and ready or? Yeah, beautiful. Okay, so I was just going to talk a little bit about apprenticeship centres, what we do and how we help with the employees, a little bit about apprenticeships and traineeships, funding from the government. And then finally, a little bit about schoolsroad.com.au and how we can assist the employees as well as apprentices. So just going on to the next page. We're able to go on to the next page. So Apprenticeship Support Australia, we are contracted by the federal government to provide schools development advice and solutions to businesses across Australia as a part of the Australian Apprenticeship Support Network Programme. We've been now in the industry for 22 consecutive years of delivering the programme. And we've had seven successful tenders with the federal government. So we've been in the industry for quite a fair while. So we've got a fair bit of knowledge and we sort of have an understanding of what employees and apprentices and school leavers are looking for these days. Over to the next slide. The role, our role is to organise signup meeting in consultation with training organisations, employers and school regions. We're there to provide advice to employees regarding eligibility for both the Commonwealth incentives as well as state incentives as well, such as payroll tax exemption, et cetera. We provide advice to the apprentices and trainees of their eligibility for travel and accommodation allowances to attend formal off the job, sorry, off the job training and any other appropriate entitlements. We check the training contract, training plan and supporting documentation where relevant. And we submit the documentation to the department so that this can actually be approved. We also provide mentoring services to a lot of apprentices and trainees once they've actually started work. So we provide them with support if they, if they're struggling, if they've got any external issues that are impacting their work, their training. We do have mentoring that is able to provide them with some form of support. So we're out there to provide employees with information. So we have a lot of employees that aren't too sure what qualifications to choose. We will actually go out, discuss this with employees, have a look at what qualifications best suit their apprentices or trainees, and then guide them down that path. And we usually will have that consultation with the TAFE as well, making sure that we do have the relevant courses, et cetera. Over to the next slide, basically apprenticeships and traineeship qualifications. I could actually list them here, but there's actually over 700 qualifications for apprenticeships and traineeships. So we could be here for quite a while. So what I've actually done on this presentation, I've included a link, which takes you to trainmarket.com.au. And in that link, there will actually provide you, all the apprenticeships are available, gives you some indication of the duration of the apprenticeships, who provides the training, the course modules, et cetera. And it's the same for traineeships as well. So it provides information on all the different traineeships that are available. Course details are provided in those traineeships, et cetera. So obviously, apprenticeships are trade related, three to four year course duration. We buy the apprentices spending one day a week at TAFE. Traineeships are qualification specific and can range anywhere from 12 to 24 months. Both can be completed as both either a full time or a part time course. So there, as I said, there are over 700 qualifications. So there's quite a few to choose from. And that's what we're there to is to provide employees and apprentices with some information on what qualifications would be most suited to the business, as well as the apprentice and the trainee. Over to the next slide is basically benefits. So there are benefits for both the employer and the apprentice that is provided from both the state and federal government. Benefits for the apprentices, if anyone's doing an apprenticeship. All apprentices are entitled to a public transport concession card, which will entitle them to half price buses, trains, ferries. Also, student concessions to certain venues such as sporting events, et cetera. There's an apprentice vehicle registration rebate for apprentices completing their first and second year of their apprenticeship. And if the car's in their name, they do get $100 off their registration rebate. There's living away from home allowances for specific apprentices that have had to move from the country for work in the specific role with regards to their apprenticeship. So we're able to provide them some information and some, we can guide them into obtaining assistance from the government. There is also a trade support loan, which is optional for apprentices. Are available to eligible apprentices to assist with everyday costs while completing your apprenticeship. An apprentice can receive up to $21,542 over the life of the apprenticeship. The year of your apprenticeship determines your amount that you may receive. There's no waiting period for the claim and the apprentice can opt in and opt out at any time. So there's a bit of funding that is available or assistance that's available from the federal government to assist an apprentice whilst they're completing their apprenticeship. Benefits for any trainees, new entrant trainees is basically a public transport concession card, which will assist them if they're having to catch public transport to work, et cetera. So that's a benefit for both apprentice and the trainees. Over to the next slide, this employer incentives as well. So the Australian government is committed to supporting the development and schools labour across the country. They provide a range of financial incentives and benefits to employers and Australian apprentices. So just a bit of a snapshot of what is available. Standard incentives are up to $4,000 for each apprentice or trainer that you take on board. Now, that can be depending on certain circumstances. Again, when we meet up with you to discuss any potential apprentices or trainees, we could actually have that discussion with you. And with further information, we can let you know exactly what you may be entitled to as an apprentice, sorry, as an employer. There is workers' compensation exemptions for apprentices. There's new New South Wales payroll tax rebates if you are taking on an apprentice or an employer. There's extra incentives to insist the employment of those with a disability, mature age, school based, Indigenous Australians. There's extra incentives to assist the employment of those with a disability, mature age, school-based, indigenous Australians. Um, anyone that's taking on an apprentice with a disability, um, they, they are able to receive support of up to a hundred and four dollars thirty per week. On all levels. Um, support for adult Australian apprentices, so if there's any employees that are taking on, um, an apprentice that's twenty-one or older. Um, they may be entitled to, um, an extra four thousand dollars of incentives from the federal government. Again, there's a fair bit of information in that and we can give you that guidance when we come out and discuss that with you. So, you know, at any time, if you, if you want to have a discussion, please give us a call at any time. And we're more than happy to come out and see you or discuss over the phone what are some of the entitlements that you may be, um, eligible for. Over to the next slide, there's just a few more little bits and pieces. Um, there is an additional identified skill shortage payment, um, which was effective from the first of July, two thousand and nineteen. It's targeted at the top ten occupations in the cert three, cert four qualification level, experiencing national skill shortage. Um, and that's an incentive two thousand dollars twelve months and two thousand dollars at completion. So there are only, um, a few courses that are available. And again, if, if you're impacted by that, we'll let you know. Everyone's obviously aware of the boosting Australian, uh, boosting apprenticeship commitments. Um, which was a, a target of ten thousand, capped at ten thousand. Just to give you an indication, that's where the federal government is supporting employees taking on apprentices or trainees. And they're actually subsidising the salary, um, fifty percent of the salary up to the third of September, twenty twenty-one. We sort of had notification last couple of days, we're reaching that target at the moment. So it is, um, something that is something that, um, may be finishing up quite soon. Um, but it's, it's another incentive that is provided by the federal government. So there is a fair bit of, um, information on incentives. And again, we're more than happy to provide that information when we come out to see you. Um, over to the next slide is, uh, Schools Road. I just wanted to tell you a little bit more about Schools Road. Schools Road is a programme that we provide for all, um, school leavers that are leaving school. And especially young, young kids that just don't know what to do when they leave school. So they can actually, um, log into schoolsroad.com.au. It's a, a free service. Um, basically, they can do things like a career quiz, um, find out what, um, career opportunities they're most suited to. Um, they can have an understanding of what qualifications are out there, what apprenticeships, what traineeships are out there that they may be interested in. So when we're actually going out to the schools, we actually do discuss a lot of this with, um, potential school leavers. So that could be anywhere from kids from year ten, eleven, twelve. And it just gives them a bit of indication as to, um, what are the options that they can have once they're, um, leaving school. Um, we also have the opportunity for, um, employees to actually use this site as well. So the employees, we've got a lot of employees are actually advertising for roles. And it's not just apprentices, so it's traineeships as well. So it's, it could be roles in business, it could be roles in retail, um, where they're offering, um, a traineeship to go with that role. So we encourage a lot of our students to, um. To obviously utilise that, that website. Um, just over to the next slide, and I think it's the last slide. There are benefits for the employees as well. So, um, again, the employees can actually use these, this site to actually advertise for any roles that they may have. Um, so we, we're utilising this service. It's a free service for employees to use. So if you've got someone that you're thinking that you want to try and get someone in business or an apprentice or anything like that. Utilise the website, get on there, advertise it. The, all the, um, information for the students will go straight through to the employer. So we don't have any interaction with that at all. It's between yourself and someone that's advertising, uh, that's sort of interested in the role. Um, so basically, that's it from me. Um, as I said, there's just a fair bit of information there. There's, as I said, there's over eight hundred apprentices and traineeships that are available. Um, and I know that there's a lot of information there. So we're more than happy to come out and speak to any employers that are interested in wanting to know a little bit more about apprenticeships and traineeships. The service that we provide is free, so there's no cost, um, to the employer or the apprentice at all. Thank you.
And thank you, Ross. So what I'll do, um, after this meeting is finalised, we will post with the assistance of Lisa. Our contact numbers, um, more notably both, um, myself and James. So that way, in the event that you would like us to come out and collaborate, we can certainly do that. And it will include Ross's details as well. So that way, um, if there's any questions surrounding traineeships and apprenticeships. But remember, that's what we're here to do. We're here to work with your organisation. So what I'll do now is I'll hand it over to you. If there's any questions that you would like answered. We've got some time, um, and with the collective suite of experts here, we're more than happy to actually answer anything for you. I've also checked the chat and there's, um, no, there was nothing posted there. So we'll just wait a while, give you some time to think about if you've got any questions. Okay. And you might not, you might not have a question right now. Obviously, there's a lot to take in and absorb. And equally, if you do think of anything over the next coming days, we're happy for you to reach out. And we'd be more than happy to actually answer those questions for you as well. So if there aren't any questions, thank you each and every one of you for your time this afternoon. And thank you, Lisa, and Hawkesbury Council for, um, partnering and collaborating with us in, um, in hosting this very first event. And thank you, everybody, for your support this afternoon and welcome. And again, thank you for the first webinar.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mina. And thank you, everybody, for contributing today. Um, I will, Mina, if you can just email me your contact details, I'll be emailing them out to everybody who's attended today. Um, and then we'll, we'll move forward from there. But thank you very much, everyone. Um, thank you.
Thank you.